Just let me know if you're ready. You're ready. Great, thank you. All right, good evening and welcome to the Federal Way City Council meeting for Tuesday, January 21st. It's great to see everybody here. I see we've got some Boy Scouts in the back of the room. Would you like to come on up? Would our Boy Scouts like to come on up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Perhaps the Scout leaders can come up and tell us what your number is. Troop number, that's what I mean. Troop number. Right there is good.
Boy Scout Troop 307 out of Federal Way, St. Louis, up at 312.
Thank you so much for coming. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. And thanks for coming tonight. You never know what's going to happen at a city council meeting. All right. Okay, first we'll have a Police Department presentation, promotional swearing-in ceremonies. Chief Wong?
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, members of the council. This evening, we'd like to take a few moments to publicly recognize and celebrate the promotion of three outstanding individuals. These individuals have consistently demonstrated strong work ethic and principled leadership. They embody the core values of our agency and are certainly deserving of this recognition. First, we have Corporal Shawn Daniels. He is being promoted to the position of Lieutenant. Shawn began his law enforcement career with the Los Angeles Police Department in 2005, where he worked in a pro act unit focusing on gang violence, illegal narcotics transactions, auto theft, and other street crimes. In 2012, Shawn came to the Federal Way Police Department as a lateral police officer. Since being here, he's worked patrol, and his most recent assignment is within our special operations unit. Shawn was also a field training officer and a firearm instructor. He's attained a BA in criminal justice from California Lutheran University. Shawn enjoys spending time with his family, mountain biking, and playing golf. Joining him here tonight is his wife Jen and their children Colt and Georgia. Jen, where are you? Colt? Jen, wave. All right, congratulations. Jen will be pinning on his badge. Jen, if you want to start making your way up. Congratulations to Lieutenant Shawn Daniels. Yeah, kids, come on up. Colt, Jen, Georgia, yeah, come on up, yeah. Please come on up. Are we positioning right for the picture? Okay, yeah, come on up, Heidi. This is important. It's going to go on our Facebook page. Okay, how about one with the kids? Can we get the kids in there together? You bet. This is a good photo op. Not too often your dad's going to get promoted. All right, next we have Detective Christopher Casey-Cruzy. He's also being promoted to the rank of Lieutenant. Casey was originally hired in 1999 as a police support officer, and prior to that, he was a member of the Federal Way Police Explorer Program for almost two years. In 2001, Casey was hired as an entry level and began his formal law enforcement career. During his tenure, Casey has served as a field training officer, contract services officer at the mall, civil disturbance unit member, emergency vehicle operations course instructor, and as a detective working persons and property crimes, as well as being assigned to the Puget Sound Auto Theft Task Force. Casey enjoys attending sporting events and concerts, boating in the summer, and spending time with his family and friends. Joining Casey here tonight is his girlfriend Christine, his parents Ralph and Chris Cruzy, and his sister Tiffany and her children. Tiffany worked for us for several years as a police support officer and quartermaster, and Casey's dad Ralph will be pinning on his badge. Congratulations, Lieutenant Christopher Cruzy. Come on up. Where's Heidi? Come on up. Take a, make sure you get the right photo. Come on up. You probably need a side shot. Oh, okay. So who's, Mom? Okay, Mom, why don't you go on up? Mom, Tiffany, in fact, the whole family could go up. Whoever would like to go up, this is your photo op. Everybody, come on up. This is your chance. Okay, this is a big deal. Okay, great. Okay, next we have Lieutenant Ray Bunk. Lieutenant Bunk is being promoted to the rank of Commander. Ray was hired as an entry level officer in 2002 and promoted to the rank of Lieutenant in 2014. Over the years, he has fulfilled responsibilities as a field training officer and the agency's public information officer. Ray is also the creator and coordinator of our Automated External Defibrillator, or AED, program, deploying 16 AEDs out into our community in our patrol vehicles. With new grant that he secured for this year, we will be adding additional 30 AEDs for deployment. This program has saved lives. Ray has served 23 years in the United States Air Force and is scheduled to retire from the military in May at the rank of Senior Master Sergeant. He has attained a Masters in Business Administration from Pacific Lutheran University and is a small business owner. Joining Ray here tonight is wife Angie and Grandma Yvonne. Angie will be pinning on his badge. Angie, come on up. Here's a little fun fact. Ray is the first entry level officer that we have hired to be promoted to the rank of Commander. Congratulations. For the photo op, Grandma, would you like to come on up for a photo? Yeah, this is, just come on up, yeah. Congratulations to all three of you for the significant career achievement. So with that, I'll have lieutenants come up first.
Lieutenant Daniels, Lieutenant Cruzy, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, Richard Daniels.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States
And I'm a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And that I will support the Constitution
And I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States
And laws of the United States.
And the state of Washington
And the state of Washington.
And the laws and ordinances
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the City of Federal Way
Of the City of Federal Way.
And will to the best of my judgment
And will to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability
Skill and abilities.
Truly and faithfully
Truly and faithfully.
Diligently and impartially
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of lieutenant
Perform the duties of lieutenant.
In and for the City of Federal Way Police Department
In and for the City of Federal Way Police Department.
As prescribed by law
As prescribed by law.
So help me God. Congratulations. All right. Commander, please raise your right hand. I, please state your name.
I, Raymond Bunk.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm
That I am a citizen of the United States
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington
And the state of Washington.
And that I will support the Constitution
And that I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws
And the Constitution and laws
Of the state of Washington
Of the state of Washington.
And the City of Federal Way, Washington
And the City of Federal Way, Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment
And will to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability
Skill and ability.
Truly and faithfully
Truly and faithfully.
Diligently and impartially
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of police commander
Perform the duties of police commander.
In and for the City of Federal Way Police Department
In and for the City of Federal Way Police Department.
As prescribed by law
As prescribed by law.
So help me God. Congratulations. All right, congratulations and thank you. Wow, it's like a wedding and half the party left. Bob, what's with me and talking about weddings? All right. Whenever we do pictures, our columnist likes to tease me because I'm always trying to micromanage how to take the pictures. So our next presentation, Proclamation, National Mentoring Month, January 2020. Deputy Mayor Honda.
Thank you. Would Tracy Oster and Jennifer Youngblood from communities and schools please come to the podium? Oh, no. Okay. And I will read the proclamation and then bring it down to you. National Mentoring Month, whereas the future of Federal Way rests on the shoulders of our youth, and whereas educated and confident children will give rise to a stronger city, and whereas mentoring matches a child with a caring, responsible adult to build confidence, stability, and to provide guidance and direction, and whereas research shows that mentoring has a beneficial and long-term impact on young people by increasing attendance at school, improving rates of high school graduation, and decreasing involvement with drugs, alcohol, and violent behaviors. And whereas, January has been designated as the National Mentoring Month, calling on adults across America to become involved with mentoring programs. Now therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and city council members of the City of Federal Way, hereby proclaim the month of January 2020 as Mentoring Month in the City of Federal Way. We urge all residents to recognize the importance of mentoring and to look for opportunities to service mentors in their communities.
First of all, we want to thank you for having us here tonight. We also want to thank you Mayor Farrell and Deputy Mayor Honda and all the city council members for proclaiming it Mentoring Month in the City of Federal Way. And we truly appreciate the support you've provided over the years. All over our city, every school day, there are mentors meeting with students, which goes to show how our community supports our students. There are many statistics that highlight how effective mentoring is, and usually we share those with you, but instead of sharing, this year, I wanted to share some firsthand experiences, so I brought one of our long-term matches, Susan and her mentee Jennifer, and I'll let them say a few words.
I started mentoring with communities and schools 12 years ago because I wanted to give back, to make a difference in my community. Going to school for an hour once a week sounded like a fun way to do that, and it has been fun. But over time, I started to see the impact that mentoring could have. So many kids today face barriers to graduation that seem insurmountable. So many kids just need somebody on their side. As mentors, we can empower our youth by listening to them, supporting them, encouraging them. By helping them to see the opportunities that are available, we can help them succeed in high school and beyond. Communities and schools does make a difference. I have seen it with the three girls that I've mentored. Tonight, I brought Jennifer. We've been together for six years, and we agree that the day we got matched by communities and schools was a lucky day for both of us. And now Jennifer's going to tell you why she likes having a mentor.
I love having a mentor because she helps me when I'm struggling with things. I can talk to her about anything, and I know that no matter what, she is always going to be there for me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. What a great success story. Thank you so much. All right, Item C, Youth Commission Update. Iris Hamilton, her chair. And I think there's other, I know there are other commissioners here as well. So Iris, did you want to have them come up as well? And stand with you?
Yes.
Come on up. Come on down. Like I said, you never know what's going to happen at a city council.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, city officials, and council members, for the opportunity to share what the Youth Commission has accomplished during the school year. My name is Iris Hamilton, appointed Youth Commission Chair. One of our core values as youth commissioners is giving back to our community. Through our work serving the city, we have kept this goal in sight. Some ways we have accomplished this is through creating the First Steps Scholarship, volunteering at a number of city events, and adopting the community game room at the Federal Way Community Center. Our most ambitious project has been the First Steps Scholarship, which was established in March 2019. The First Steps Scholarship is a scholarship that will provide funding for youth ages from 12 to 17 to partake in recreational programs and community center memberships. Since our initial steps in creating the scholarship, we have received numerous donations from members of the community. In October, we held a raffle for a basket full of fall goodies during the annual Tricks and Treats event at the Federal Way Community Center. During the event, we interacted with members of the community, talked about Youth Commission, and raised $300 for our scholarship. This new experience further solidified our values and inspired us to continue raising funds. We will continue to collect donations and raffle off baskets at future special events hosted by the City of Federal Way. To date, we have raised $10,800, and we expect that number to increase. We are in the process of creating an application and process for individuals to apply and be awarded monies in the coming months. This year, we also have, Youth Commission has voted on adopting the community game room at the Federal Way Community Center. Sahali's AP art class will be designing and painting a mural to liven up and create a more inviting space for the community. We are in process of adding a coin-operated pool table, an air hockey table, and foosball table. We are working on a chalkboard game wall for the community and to add to the variety of games. We hope to incorporate more youth influence and voice in our community through the changes in this room. We are excited for our upcoming projects and continuing our work throughout the rest of the school year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Oh, yeah. Actually, could we have each of the commissioners just come up and say their name real quick and identify yourself?
Hi, I'm the vice chair, and my name is Daniel Chung.
Hello, my name is Nnedi Aviebo, and I'm a voting member.
I'm Emily Odom, and I'm also a voting member.
I'm Amy Oshabro, and I am also a voting member.
I'm Inkita Sharma, and I'm a voting member as well.
I'm Samuel Liam, and also a voting member.
All right. Thank you so much for your services. Give them a big round of applause. Thank you for your work. Okay, now we've got Mayor's emerging issues and report. Last Monday, in this very room, we had a joint session of the King County and Pierce County councils to discuss the appointment for the vacancy that we had in our legislative delegation for state representative. And by unanimous vote, our own Jesse Johnson, council member Jesse Johnson, was selected as our, was elected by the joint session of the King County councils to be our representative in the state legislature. And so congratulations, Jesse. My understanding is you gave your inaugural address yesterday and on MLK Day, and if you want to talk a little bit, I'm going to turn it over to you, and go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, two and a half years ago, this community elected its youngest council member in history. I know Councilmember Martin Moore was previously the youngest, so shout out to him as well. And you elected the young man with the Afro, which is me, to serve on the city council. And it's been truly an honor. And I can wholeheartedly say I've served this role with intention and purpose in two and a half years. And I just wanted to let the community to know that I will be stepping down as a city council member to make room for another council member. I think, going back to my athlete days, I serve every role that I can 110%. Not 90% or 99% or even 109%. I think it's important that you serve your role 110%. And so I want to give that to the state representative role. I'm going to give it my all, and I think that we can have another person in the seat who brings the same level of introspection, ingenuity, and innovation to the seat. So, I will be stepping down. We're going to establish a timetable, so there's no effective date yet. But just wanted to let the community know it's been an honor, and thank you for electing me to the city council. And I'll continue this work to be your state representative at the highest level.
Thank you, Jesse. Thank you. I know, we speak for everybody. It's an honor to serve with you, and we're really excited about the opportunity to work with you. So, and we just missed it myself, and we had a delegation down in Olympia last week, last Thursday. And we just missed Jesse in his office, and he had to go to caucus. But the office looks great and ready to go, so congratulations. Okay, also, we had... We've got our city council annual retreat. It's coming up on Saturday, February 1st. It'll be at Dumas Bay. I think we're going to get... I think the doors will open at about 8:00 a.m. and for breakfast, and then 8:30 we'll get started in earnest. So, that's a really good opportunity to sit down and, you know, hear from your council members. And of course, we take public comment during the council retreat. And we'll have a facilitator, and we're working on an agenda right now. I know the deputy mayor and her team are working very hard on making sure that we've got a great agenda that's going to really talk about visioning and talk about planning. But I'll let you guys talk about that when your reports come. Okay, recent events. We had the Up for Growth Housing Underproduction in Washington State Report Release Event. That's kind of a mouthful. It was hard to put into one small headline. That was at the Performing Arts and Events Center on January 10th. And it really was a... Actually, all sectors of the housing... Not economy, but housing... Of the housing portion of our economy, they were all represented, from renters to single-family housing to... And it was at the Performing Arts and Events Center. I gave a brief opening. It was great to see the PAC used that way. It was also great to hear about the report that was released regarding the underproduction. You know, just to get some hard numbers in regard to what's going on with regard to affordable housing. And I think the more quantifying they can do and talk about goal-setting, I think that's really important. It's also important to have, having all sectors of that part of the economy. That's what I was trying to articulate. Having all parties there was actually a good conversation to have. There were state... I believe we had several council members there. We had our senator... Several state senators and representatives were present. There was a panel discussion. It was a good discussion about affordable housing in the region. Well, we were in Olympia the day last Thursday, as I mentioned, and we... For purposes of our argument before the Washington State Supreme Court on the sewer and water tax case that is now currently before the Washington State Supreme Court, it was after that that we went and located Representative Johnson's office. And that was an interesting process, and we'll probably have a decision on that case within probably about three to six months. And so we'll keep you informed on that. And it was a very interesting process to see the Supreme Court argument. Let's see here. Let's see here. We had... I had a Facebook Live event this past Friday. If you were not able to view that when it was happening, it's still on. We'll actually have it on YouTube as well. I took quite a number of questions from the community that came in, not only prior to that, but during the event. It's a really good opportunity to hear from people and really check in on the major issues. So, it's... If you go to my Facebook page, you can watch it in its entirety. It's about 59 minutes. And then we'll also put it out on YouTube as well. And I would also say, one of the things that we need to get back, and we're going to do some Neighborhood Connection Town Hall meetings. We'll probably have one in March and another in April. So we'll have two additional, essentially, Town Hall meetings this spring. And so it is... Obviously, it's important to hear from the people that we work for. We had the Martin Luther King Food Drive at area grocery stores on January 18th, this past Saturday. It was a great event. We... I actually don't have the... Actually, I do. Let's see if I can find the pound totals. Let's see. There we go. We raised 4,050 pounds of food and collected $354.36 in cash. So, thank you very much to all the volunteers, and it was a great... And Jerry Lynn and just all the people that made it a success. The council was there, and we went to several grocery stores. And I'd like to thank Safeway that made that... Safeway and Fred Meyer that made that possible. And we just had a lot of people... A lot of very generous people in our community gave 4,000 pounds of food. So that's great. Deputy Mayor.
It went to the senior center. The food this time went to the senior center.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. And then we had... On Saturday night, we had the 13th Korean-American Celebration at the PAC. And that was just a phenomenal presentation. There was a cultural event before that. Then we had the presentation inside the Performing Arts and Events Center on the stage. And it was great to see, you know, all the performers. And I'll let my colleagues up here talk about all that. But it was great. It was a great showcase of a great deal of talent. And then, obviously, we had the Martin Luther King Junior Event, hosted by Thomas Jefferson High School at the Performing Arts and Events Center. Actually, one of our... One of our Youth Commissioners actually was speaking. She's gone now, I believe. But it was just a great performance. The Black Student Union at Thomas Jefferson did a phenomenal job. And I was honored to be there along with many of our colleagues on the council. So, it was yesterday from, I think, 11:00 to 12:30. Councilmember Copeng.
I don't think we should forget the Diversity Commission and their efforts.
Thank you.
Outstanding efforts in that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Absolutely. The Diversity Commission did a phenomenal job. Thank you very much, Mark. And they were there. They put it all together, and the event wouldn't have happened without the Diversity Commission. So, thank you.
We might as well thank Jerry Lynn as well.
(laughing). All right, now from our Copeng's report. No, I'm just kidding. I'm kidding. Okay, thank you. You got it. Yes, I know. The event wouldn't have happened without Jerry Lynn. So, okay, that was great. It was a... It was a really... It was a great community event, and I really appreciate it. So, thank you. Okay, that's my report. And council committee reports. First, we've got Finance on Economic Development. Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we did not have a meeting in December. Our first meeting of the year is going to be January 28 at 4:30 p.m. Just a heads up to the committee's members. We are going to have a really busy meeting because we have a lot of activities for December and January combined. So just a heads up. And then after that, I will have a complete committee report at the next council meeting.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Sephardoson.
We have a meeting tomorrow.
Awesome. Okay, we'll hear about it next week, next time. Okay. Land Use and Transportation. Councilmember Copeng.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. We had a good meeting. The last meeting was kind of the first of the year, so a lot of projects are coming up. But there was one project in particular that I was particularly happy to see is moving forward on. That's... There's been a gap on Dash Point Road between the Sacagawea Ball Field and the church there. There was a... There was not a sidewalk. And we're actually going to complete the sidewalk area in front of the school, which certainly will improve safety for the students that are walking to and from school every day. So that's... I think that's certainly a good improvement. We definitely continued our discussion on airport issues and had a discussion on panhandling and different ways to address that as well, potentially through signage. So definitely look forward to continuing both of those conversations. And we'll have our next meeting the first Monday of February. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now for the Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee. Councilmember.
Well, I'm going to defer to Councilmember Representative Johnson on that. And then, go ahead.
So, we had a meeting that was rescheduled last week. And so I'm not sure when the rescheduled meeting is going to be occurring. But I know on there, we were going to be having a special report from the chief around crime. And so we established this last year. It's a quarterly crime report where he updates us on what's going on. And so that'll be at our next Parks meeting. And when will that be occurring? Is that rescheduled?
We didn't reschedule it, but we have some items on the agenda today that have to be passed.
Okay.
So, we didn't hold the meeting because of the threat of snow, and many members of our staff live outside of Federal Way. And it didn't snow that night, but it was really cold. And just the idea of people driving late at night wasn't... Yes.
Yeah. Yep. Speaking of which, Councilmember Johnson, did you say what committees you've been assigned to yet?
Sure. So, at the state level, I've been assigned to the Business and Consumer Protection Services Committee as well as the Housing, Community Development, and Veterans. So they have long names, too. It looks like the city. So they're both the same committees that former Representative Reeves was on.
That's great. Awesome. Okay, all right. And then, in regional... Do we have anything? Councilmember Sephardoson, anything on PIC?
So, PIC meeting for January was canceled, and so the next one's going to be February 12th. However, we were at a meeting last Wednesday for all the new appointed officials for SCA, Sound Cities Association. And it was really a really good meeting. We had a represent... King County Councilman Chair Baldrici was one of the speakers. And then Metro CEO was another speaker. So it was really good. And a lot of us were there, as well as new members who are appointed to the various regional committees were there. So I'm looking forward to a great year. And I'll defer to Susan, Council... Deputy Mayor Honda, if there's any change, so.
Great. And could you tell everybody what PIC means, stands for? I know, me too.
Policy Public Issues Committee.
That's right. With the Sound Cities Association. So we always ask Lydia, as our representative there, thank you very much for the update.
Yeah, and it's a regional committee that serves... Where all cities except for Seattle are members. So it's a 38-member committee representing through Sound Cities Association.
A million people, one voice. All right, that's their motto. Deputy Mayor Honda.
Thank you. I would also say that on the PIC committee, every city has two members. One is a voting member and one is an alternate. So every city has an equal voice and an equal vote. So it's pretty important that we have people there and that they're involved in that committee. So, it's my turn.
Yep.
Awesome.
Deputy Mayor, report.
So, I'd like to talk about our city volunteer commissions. And we have several commissions that have openings right now. And they just disappeared, but here they come back. Okay, so we have arts commission openings, civil service commission openings, diversity, human services commission, Parks and Recreation and Youth Commission openings. And the applications will be reviewed on January 31st, which is just around the corner. If you're interested, you do need to live in the City of Federal Way. And applications can be found online, and you can actually apply online and just push a button and send the application in. Or you can get a paper copy and send it into our city clerk. But these are... All these commissions, some of them meet monthly, some of them meet a few times a year, and some of them meet only as necessary. So the time commitment is different for each commission. And we really look forward to our commission members. They help us as a council, and they help the mayor learn what's going on in the city and things that we should be doing. So please consider volunteering or applying for a commission. And we look forward to getting your applications. And I think that's all I have. Oh, I wanted to talk a little bit about the Board of Health. I'm a member of the Board of Health for Sound Cities Association. And on Thursday, we had a meeting, and we passed four... Five resolutions that we sent to the state of Washington that we're hoping that the state legislature will look at, and they all have to do with health. So Representative Johnson, I will be talking to you about these. But they're all... One, and really the one that's most important, I think, to everyone in the state of Washington, is funding public health. And it's not funded right now as well as it should be. So if we could get the funding that is necessary, public health can do even more to keep our citizens healthy and where they're supposed to be, so.
Look forward to it, Deputy Mayor. Thank you.
And other than that, we will have our... Oh, the retreat. The retreat, February 1st. It's a Saturday at Dumas Bay. It does... Doors open at 8:00. We'll be having breakfast. We do start at 8:30, and we will finish by 4:00. And the theme of the retreat is looking towards the future. So we'd like to plan out till at least 2030, which is when Sound Transit will be building their second train station here in Federal Way. We do allow public comment. And our facilitator, every time we ask to put that into the agenda, to make time for public comment, he tells us that we're the only city council... He's done hundreds of city council retreats that allow public comment. So I think that's pretty cool because we always want to listen to the public. It's important that we hear what the public wants to tell us. So please come. Public comment will be in the morning. I think it's about 11:00, but I'm not exactly sure on that time. We will be posting the agenda, and the times will be on the agenda. So we hope to see you there. Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, now we've got citizen comment, the most important part of the evening. I've got three pink sheets, and if anybody wishes to speak to the council, please fill out a pink sheet and hand it up. Dana Holloway, Suey Semenini, and Gary Grant. Dana?
You almost lucked out. I forgot about... Today was Tuesday. Being retired, I don't know what day of the week it is. Good evening. My name is Dana Holloway, and I'd like to talk about the signage on the section of 320... Excuse me. Wrong one. 21st Avenue Southwest, next to Twin Lakes Fred Meyer store. Heads up, EJ. I'll start off with what I want. I want the two-speed limit slash school signs that are located on the west side of 21st Avenue Southwest, which is the side that Safeway is on, moved to the east side, the side that Fred Meyer is on, because they are specifically for the people exiting the Fred Meyer parking lots. Why should they be moved? Because they are poorly located across four lanes of traffic from where the vehicles that are exiting the Twin Lakes Fred Meyer. And cars that are traveling north and southbound on 21st, and that's a busy street, block the visibility of the sign. If you're in your car, you can't... There's most... Many times, you can't even read the sign because there's a vehicle going in front of it. So about the sign itself, it's an unusual sign. It's like a speed limit 20 sign. On top of that is a school sign. Below that is, in very small font, 645-725 a.m. and 155-225 p.m. And then below that, photo enforced. That's a very busy sign that's across four lanes of traffic for the people pulling out. Now, what's... 21st is so good because we have variable speed limit signs on both north and southbound. We have school signs that are telling us it's coming up. So if you're going north and southbound, it's a piece of cake, and it's very well. But if you're coming out of the parking lot, you can't see the sign, or if you could see it, can't read it. So I'm asking the city, it shouldn't cost that much. Just relocate them to the Fred Meyer side of the parking. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dana. EJ, we'll talk about that tomorrow, and we'll have you get back to Ms. Holloway. Suey.
It's Sally.
Hi.
Hi. So I wanted to talk to you all about youth homelessness and unaccompanied minors. I'm really glad to see that this is on the top of your agenda, both for the retreat but in general. So to contextualize what Federal Way is facing in the broader context of King County. When you review Seattle Public School District demographic enrollment against neighboring school districts, the projected trend right now is that the last non-white or low-income household will be... household will be living in City of Seattle Limits in the year 2034. That means that we can expect to see approximately 8,000 socioeconomic refugee households moving into Federal Way and other South King County areas. Now, in four days from now, we're going to be doing the point-in-time homelessness count. And the new contractor for King County, in addition to the counts, they have software that will let us know the exact latitude and longitude of each unaccompanied minor or young person living in our city limits. My ask is that we direct investments this year to have a local youth shelter or service provider who can remove these young people off our streets each night and ensure their basic physical safety. And in addition to the imminence of this crisis and addressing it before those socioeconomic refugees enter our community, and the link expansion compounds risk of gentrification, it's also important for the shift priorities of our officers and community safety. Now, the South Seattle precinct can tell you that in that neighborhood, they did not make any investments to address young people's safety and having them off the streets at night. And what that has done is that it has affected crime trends across almost every single category, whether it's lower-level crimes such as burglary or robbery, or the risk of firearm homicides and fatalities. So, I'm really hoping that this year, we can conclusively resolve every single one of those counts of unaccompanied minors on our streets each night, because it's going to be really hard to explain, and I'm going to be here every two weeks. We're going to have a standing date where I'm going to ask if we've directed investments or made a plan, because it's going to be really hard to explain during campaign and filing season if we've had endorsements and money raised but no beds made for the young people on our streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Si. Deputy Mayor, do you have a question?
I have a question for you. Unaccompanied youth are, homeless youth have been an issue and concern of mine for a long time. How, I've done the point of count, and I'm doing it again this, this week. How are you going to find the youth? Because usually they're, they're not easy to find.
So, they have both community liaisons that are lived experience folk with homelessness experience, but in addition to that, through synergistic data sets, through zero youth detention work and stopping school to prison, and looking at the booking reports and what the officers are seeing, we are able to see where the future hotspots or risks of young people who are on the streets becoming a broader community safety issue is going to be. So, it might not be immediately apparent, but we have to be on the front end of this, because if our streets become an economic Syria, it's going to be a lot harder to address this if they start looking like the Seattle hotspots that didn't address unaccompanied minors that then became initiated into more serious concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Farrell?
Yes.
So, I'm sorry. Say your name again, please.
Si.
My first name is Si.
Si. Thank you so much. So, we've been working with, I've been working with a woman who is trying to start a nonprofit for youth shelter, and there'll be a meeting on the 23rd at the 320th Library at, let's see, 5:30 PM. If you'd like to come, her name is Erica Norton. She's been here to testify before the council, and I'm sure she would love to hear from you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Si. Appreciate it. All right, Gary Grant. And then Betty Taylor.
Hello. I'm Gary Grant. No, nobody from your office contacted me about the roundabout, and what we need is a written statement saying when that roundabout is going to be put back to where it was supposed to be. Enough of that. I have, for several years, said that we need an independent citizens oversight committee, not the one that you put together that it doesn't address the public because of the people that are on it. When I first brought this to you and talked with Brian Wilson, you had me write up what I thought it would look like. And on that sheet, I put who shouldn't be on there. You may not have a copy. I have a copy if people would like to see it and see just why those people shouldn't have been on there in the first place. Now, we need an independent citizens oversight committee, especially now that the city is growing, and we are more diverse than what you see. Having said that, I encourage, I challenge everyone sitting on that board. Next month is Black History Month. Go beyond your European-American teachings of what that means, and find out exactly what blacks in this country have done, have gone through, and are trying to accomplish, because this city is not getting there anytime fast. I have an issue with the mentality of some of you. When you say you're diverse, the only thing that I can honestly say is different in the City of Federal Way now than from the day that I first realized what was going on in 1958, is the signs that are not at the city entrances that state this is a John Birch Society community. Now, we have to do better. We do not need talk. We need you to understand how to represent all of us, not just this one sector that you keep pandering to. So, send us the letter for the roundabout. Take my challenge and learn true black history.
Mr. Grant, I'm going to give you one more minute. Could you, could you refresh us? Can you just add one minute to it? Mr. Grant, can you explain the issue with your roundabout? Why would we need to send you a letter? Remind me.
You would need to send me a letter because you have an issue with doing things and having a, an accountability for what you say you're going to do. The roundabout was changed in 19, or 2011. The curbing was redone after that, and the roundabout was put to its original size per the county. When I had you bring Marwan and Jeff out there, you said that the roundabout was at its reduced size, which enabled large trucks to go around with no problem and not interfering with the residential parking. It is not that way. That needs to be put back to where it was, and what I told you last time, I have fought for over 10 years to get done and was undone in a matter of a week.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Grant. So, we've, I don't have a phone number or an email, but we've got a physical address. So, you'd like a letter to that, to that address?
I'd appreciate that.
Okay. EJ, let's talk about this tomorrow. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Gary. Mr. Grant. Okay, then we've got Betty Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Betty Taylor. And before I say what I'm going to say, I'm going to tell, I'm going to say this. What I'm going to talk about, I have no affiliation at all with these people. I don't know who they are. I just read something in the newspaper that just really, I don't know, just like, didn't sit with me right, you know? So, I, you know, in the newspaper, you know, like, there are different events that have happened in Federal Way, whether it be somebody getting a stab, whether it be somebody getting shot, and it's just been recent, and it's been like boom, 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 boom. I mean, and I, what I want to talk about, I know that there was an event at, in an apartment complex, and I know that somebody got shot, and I know that the person that got shot, I know that he had a disability. I have no idea who this person is, okay? And I know, I just don't know. I just don't know. I'm just a citizen, just like everybody else. So, and I don't know, I, I've read that there were like two people in the parking lot, and they were arguing, and then some shots were fired, and, and the person that was in the car was a paraplegic, and, and I don't know what transpired prior to the shooting. I don't know if the policeman asked the person, could you please step out the car, and maybe didn't know that he was disabled and couldn't step out the car. I have no idea. I can only wonder and speculate, just like many other people. But I need, I'm pretty sure that there's a lot of us in the community that need rest, you know? I know there's some things that cannot be disclosed to the community, but we need to talk about stuff. We just, because it's not going to settle. It's just not going to settle. Like I said, I don't even know these people, but it just bothered me to hear that somebody got shot. I don't know what happened. I just know they got shot, and next thing I'm hearing, oh, they was in a wheelchair. And then I'm thinking, well, did the policeman know that the person was disabled and maybe couldn't get out because he couldn't move? I don't know. I have a disabled grandson, and, and when he's in a confrontation, he shuts down. But will the police know that? Will they know that? No. He don't wear a tag on his back. He ain't got a sign nowhere that says, "I am disabled and I can't speak up for myself." So, I know that they do, do escalation training. I just think something else needs to happen. What other training, what, how can we, how can we resolve all this stuff? Because it's just, I, I'm a grandmother, and I would hate for something like this to happen, and my grandson freezes and doesn't move, and was told to move, but he couldn't move. Ooh, that just blow me away. Anyway, I think maybe, I don't know what kind of training they do, but we need to come together more as a community and talk about issues like this, because issues like this do not just affect me. It affects everyone. We have 100,000 people. We, we, 100, in, in Federal Way. It affects us all. How many people have read the newspaper? It goes all over. People are wondering. So, we need answers so we can sleep at night.
Thank you, Betty. I do want to let everybody know that the officer involved shooting to which she referred is being investigated by a independent law enforcement agency, in no way affiliated with the City of Federal Way, and it's currently under investigation. And so, thank you, Betty, and we'll certainly, at some point, more information can be shared. But at this point, it's being investigated by another law enforcement agency pursuant to all protocols. All right. So, thank you. I don't have any more pink sheets. Thank you very much for, for your comments. And at this time, we'll move over to the consent agenda. And, let's see here. Oh, Mr. Grant, you're going to hear from us. We're going to send you a letter. Are you still here, Mr. Grant?
Over.
Oh, okay. All right. Consent agenda. These items have gone through council committee and can be passed with one motion, and I'll go ahead and read them, and then I'll ask for a motion. A, the minutes for the January 7th, 2020, regular and special meeting. Item B, the South Dash Point Road Improvements Bit Award. Item C, 2019 Storm Pipe Repair Phase II Bit Award. And item D, industrial park, parking restrictions and towaway zones. Counsel, is there any, any of those items you'd want pulled for separate consideration? Councilmember Sephardos?
Five D.
Okay. Five D is pulled for separate consideration. All right. Counsel, any others? All right. Deputy Mayor Honda, do you have a motion with respect to A through C?
Yes, I move approval of items A through C on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Matters pass unanimously. Item D, Councilmember Sephardos.
Yeah. I was in at the land use meeting, so it's a question I just wanted to ask about item D. And so, my, my question is, so some, some of the signs are no parking, towing, right? And then some of the signs, and some of the signs are for 10 hours, right? And so, my question, my first question is how we came to the determination of which, where to put which signs? And then my second question is, how do you inform the businesses and all the trucks, especially that have been parking there? How do you inform them that, or when, when are they informed that they can no longer park there? And by the way, I do drive down that street, and I'm happy this is happening. Just had that question, because naturally, people go ahead and park, so.
All right. Please.
Yes. Hi, Jason Kennedy, junior traffic engineer. So, I guess the first question in terms of the signs, there was a community meeting that took place prior to my employment with the city, but it took place with, with Rick and, and the police, as well as the business community in that area. And they were the, you know, kind of in that collaboration, came up with the ideas of what they were looking for in terms of, of that area, in terms of parking restrictions. And then, based on, you know, our traffic, you know, engineering, that sort of thing, in, in input, we came up with, you know, these particular signs in those particular areas, and if, if you'd like, you know, we can show you the map in which the specific zones are, you know, outlined. Okay. So, yeah, so, and so that was, again, based on feedback from the, you know, the business community. And in terms of the, and just to be clear, to be clear, you know, this, this is not a budgeted item currently, so this is just a proposed, you know, item, and at some point that there will have to be, you know, funds to be available for these types of, you know, this activity. So, right now, it's a, it's unfunded, but, you know, it's no budget item right now. So, keep in mind, you know, that, it's not going to happen immediately. However, the, the signs and the zones, once they get put up, they will be, you know, we will work with the police to make sure that, you know, that they are fully enforceable. And of course, then, once they are installed and, and out in the public, then they will be able to be, you know, enforced with tickets and so forth.
I totally agree that it's needed, and so that, so I'm happy it's happening. It's just that if I'm used to parking there just customerly, especially if I'm a truck driver, then I may not notice that it's there. So, that's why how we communicate is, was where I'm asking the question, how we plan on enforcing it when it's time.
So, Mayor, if I can jump in?
Yeah, I'll defer.
Okay. Rick Perez is just about making his way halfway to the mound here.
Okay. Rick can probably jump in, too. So, we, we do this somewhat regularly in conjunction with police, where we add no parking signs or towaway signs. There's a process that jointly with police that, you know, the signs, from a legal perspective, as soon as they are posted, they are enforceable. That being said, we work with PD, and there's a little bit of a warning period typically where it's a, the signs are enforceable, but they typically give a warning as opposed to a ticket off the bat, and then at some point, it does change over to full enforcement. But that's, it's the same process we, we repeat every time we do this.
Rick, anything else?
So, I did want to add that when, as part of the community meeting we held, one of the considerations for which side of the street should have no parking at all was which side of the street could provide the most parking spaces because of the lack of driveways. So, typically, the north side had less driveways, so we could get more parking on it, on 341st. Same thing on 18th, the west side, no driveways at all, and so that parking will continue to be allowed. It's the east side that it wouldn't. There's also a consideration for people that couldn't see around the parked vehicles trying to get out of the driveways.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And thank you, Jason. All right. Deputy Mayor Honda, do you have a motion?
Sure. I move item D on the consent agenda.
Second.
It's a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matters pass unanimously. Now, we've got a public hearing regarding adoption, extension of entering land use regulations and official controls for the provision of telecommunications facilities within the city. I'll now open the public hearing. First, we'll have a staff report from Ryan Call, our city attorney. Then we'll have citizen comment, up to three minutes, and then council questions.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. We're here tonight to consider... to co- uh, consider interim zoning. It's actually to extend, uh, the interim zoning that's already in place for small cell wireless, uh, zoning in the city. Um, what has happened is usually when we do an interim zoning, we come back with final zoning at the end of the interim period. Um, in this case, we have a somewhat unique circumstance in that, um, during this interim period, the, a bunch of cities have sued the federal government. So, the, the, uh, there's a consortium currently, uh, it's pending within the, uh, I think this is the next slide, before the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, um, where the FCC is being sued for pretty aggressive rulemaking that favors the industry over cities. Um, so we're proposing, and this is with the advice of our council, uh, Alder Murphy Wallace, who is, um, advises on the small cell development of our ordinances, that it's really hard to, to regulate right now in this sort of unknown period. So, we're proposing to keep the interim zoning in place until, um, there's some resolution in the Ninth Circuit, um, as to what the law is actually going to be. Um, so, there is an ordinance before council. It'll be later on, not immediately after this public hearing. Um, and I will attempt to answer any questions you have. Um, I do want to make it clear that Mr. Orthman, who's my deputy, has been the lead on this and, uh, invaluable to me that he's leaving the city. And so we're, we're gonna be finding someone to help us with this. But we do have outside council engaged. So, if there's any questions, um, I'd be happy to, to answer them. One other thing, uh, we are proposing to do immediate enactment of this. This is not a subject, subject to referendum or initiative. So, if a majority of council approves, this would take immediate effect.
Okay. Alright, uh, before we get to council questions, uh, the agenda calls for, uh, citizen comment. Is there anybody who'd like to comment on this? You've got up to three minutes. Anybody who wishes to comment? Anyone who wishes to comment? Okay, hearing none. Um, now, citizen question, excuse me, uh, council questions. Counsel, any questions on this matter? Okay, uh, hearing none. Um, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Councilmember Copeng?
Yes, I move to close the public hearing.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, let's see unanimously. Alright, and then, um, then we'll go to the ordinance section of the agenda, uh, for, uh, later action. Alright, council business, item 7A, the 2021, uh, 2020 through 2021 council committee assignments. Deputy Mayor Honda.
Thank you. So this is one of the hardest things that the deputy mayor has to do, which is to assign council members to our different council committees. And I asked each council member, I talked with each council member. So this was something that I tried to, try to make everyone happy. That doesn't always work, but I, I did my best. I think that these committees will work the best for the city. Um, I take this really seriously and I appreciate the trust that you have all put into me as de- as your deputy mayor. So, uh, for FedRAC, we have as chair, Councilmember Tran. Uh, we have on that committee, Councilmember Cochmar and Councilmember Copeng. On LUTC, we have Councilmember Copeng as the chair, Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Tran as members. And on our parks, human safety, public safety, human services, public safety committee, we have Councilmember Cochmar as chair and council members Assefa Dawson and Johnson as members. Um, that needs to be voted on by the council. The, um, I also have asked, um, Councilmember Moore to be our voting delegate to the pick committee and Councilmember Assefa Dawson to be the alternate. And then I've been serving on the skateboard committee for two years now and I'm gonna continue on that. Uh, those do not need council approval, but, um, others do. Oh, LTAC, oh geez, LTAC, I forgot. And LTAC, I've asked Councilmember Assefa Dawson to be the chair of that. Thank you for reminding me. I'm very excited. I think that this will be a great, um, group of people working together.
Alright, Councilmember Copeng, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I move approval of the council committee appointments as presented by the deputy mayor.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matters pass unanimously. Congratulations. Okay, item B, Teamster Collective Bargaining Agreement Staff Report by Ryan Call, our city attorney.
Uh, good evening again, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of city council. Um, I'm here to present tonight the proposed, uh, collective bargaining agreement for the Teamsters for the year 2020. This is a one-year agreement. Traditionally, we want to negotiate longer term agreements than one year. Um, we had a somewhat unique, uh, circumstance this time around in that we're in the middle of a compensation study and the Teamsters have a provision in their contract that includes them in, uh, that compensation study. So, this is kind of a, an, a carryover. Basically, we're going to punt, keep things pretty much status quo. Um, it does include a 2.5% COLA, uh, for the, the Teamsters. The, that is, I believe, 0.5% more than the unrepresented employees received, but it is very consistent with what other representative groups got. And it's also, um, likely lower than what the market will show, uh, they probably need to get up to market rate. So, this is only a one-year contract. We'll be rolling right back into negotiations once the comp study is published, which it should be soon. The total cost of the increase is $52,000 for the year 2020. The total cost of the contract for all of the Teamsters, uh, would be 2.12 million dollars. Are there any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Alright, I'm seeing no questions. Deputy Mayor Honda, do you have a motion?
Yes. I move approval of the proposed 2020 collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters Local Union Number 763.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matters pass unanimously. Thank you, Ryan. Alright, item C, gratification of amendments to the countywide policies regarding school siting. Uh, we'll have a staff report from Margaret Clark, our principal planner. Who also happens to be our longest-serving employee. How many years now, Margaret?
Uh, as of November 1st of last year, 29 years.
Wow, okay.
I don't have my good glasses on. Just, just in order to pull up the file.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, members of the city council. I'm Margaret Clark with the Community Development Department. And this evening, I'll be giving you, um, a fairly short presentation on proposed amendments to the countywide planning policies regarding school siting. The policy question in front of you is should the city council ratified the amendments to the countywide planning policies adopted by the King County Council that sets out best practices for cities and the county, working together with school districts to build new schools and school facilities within the urban growth area. And the urban growth area is the city itself and what's called the potential annexation area. And the potential annexation area is that area that hopefully sometime in the future, we will annex. Each, uh, city, uh, has a PAA. For background purposes, the city received a request from King County to ratify an amendment to the King County planning policies related to siting of schools. The Growth Management Plan Council originally developed and adopted the CPPs. And the GMPC is made of elected officials from King County, Seattle, Bellevue, and this used to be called the suburban cities, but I think it's called sound cities now, and special districts. The CPPs were first adopted in 1994. Since that time, there have been subsequent amendments adopted by King County, and these amendments are sent to the cities for ratification. Amendments become effective when ratified by ordinance or resolution by at least 30% of the city and county governments representing 70% of the population of King County. A city is deemed to have ratified the amendment, amendments if it either sends a letter in support of the amendments or does nothing. If the city council desires to disapprove the amendments, they must take legislative action by January 23rd, 2020. So what I'm gonna do now is just go through the list of proposed amendments. And then at the very end, if you have any questions, then I can answer it. Um, I got, got into a little bit more detail at LUTC, but because of the length of this agenda, I'll be a little briefer. The first one is to identify surplus public properties that could work as new school sites. This would be our responsibility. The second one is assist with identifying private properties that could be available for new school sites. Thirdly, look for opportunities for shared use of buildings, fields, parking, and other facilities between the city or county and the school district. Next, consider options and zoning for mixed-use development that could accommodate the school. Investigate how regulations and processes can be modified to make challenging sites work for new, expanded, and renovated school facilities. And consider the feasibility of allowing play, fields in a rural area adjacent to schools located in urban growth area and with direct access from the UGA. Next, broaden the number of zone classifications within which schools are permitted to locate. Coordinate the permit review process to improve certainty for school districts and to shorten the permit and pro- process time, process time, use and priority permitting as appropriate. Implement a phased review of school development so the school site may be modified as needed over time. And so portable facilities may be sited and replaced in an efficient manner. And then the last two is work with school districts to establish site-specific transportation demand management protocols to encourage more walk-in, bike-in, and transit ridership to reduce the need for parking. And then partner with school districts in the planning and financing need to improve if appropriate based on topography and surrounding neighborhood characteristics, walk-in and bike-in routes to school. And in your staff report, we responded to all of these and how we meet them, or in one, in one situation does not right now. In summary, the city has existing zoning regulations, comprehensive plan goals and policies, and best practices in the plan review process to comply with all of the amendments except for the last one related to partnering with school districts in the planning and financing. Any financing decisions would be up to the city council's discretion. So the city council has three options. First, send a letter in support of the amendments back to King County. This would have the effect of ratification. Secondly, do nothing, which would also have the effect of rat- ratification. And then three, adopt a resolution opposing the amendments to the CPPs. The mayor recommends that the city council approve the proposed amendments related to best practices and direct staff to draft a letter to King County for the mayor's signature. And I'd be happy to ans- answer any questions.
Alright, council, any questions? Oh, Councilmember Cochmar.
Uh, thank you very much. So, Margaret, when you, uh, slide 10, you talked about working with school district to expe- to establish site-specific trans- TDMs, Transportation Demand Management.
Yeah.
To encourage more walking. Are we, are we identifying projects for new school site, siding?
No, 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 we're not. Um, what this is all about is if the school wants to site a new school, then we would have policies to support that siting. And, uh, we did work with the school district over the last two years. I don't know what's happened to this. And all, all four schools were approved by the city. So we have a, we have been working with them. But these were not new sites. These were existing sites where the schools were being rebuilt.
So I'm trying to understand why, why the county is, i- is this something that they renew every year? Or is this something new?
Um, no, it's not new. They first adopted this, I think, in about 2015. But then they, they propose amendments periodically to it. This is the second time it's come to us.
Thank you.
Okay, council, any other questions? Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you.
Um, alright, Councilmember Copeng?
Yeah, I also wanted to say, in addition to the mayor's recommendation, the Land Use Transportation Committee approved this unanimously. Um, I approve, I move approval of the mayor sending a letter to the King County supporting the proposed amendments to the countywide planning policies.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion?
You know, the only reason I, I was questioning is that I feel that with countywide planning policies, Growth Management Act, that was established in 1994, um, we're getting the short-chaffed a lot. And I just want to have us stand up for what we need in South King County so that we're not the dumping ground and the county is passing these policies that we sort of just ratify. So I, I just want to question everything that's coming on from the county. It's just my whole, my purpose, not with, of course, I want to work with the school district. I just want to question what's going on.
Understood. It's why we became a city 30 years ago.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Uh, council, any other questions? Okay, there's been a motion, a second. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matters pass the uni- uh, matters pass unanimously. Alright. Uh, now, uh, thank you, Margaret.
Thank you.
Um, item D, Regency Cleaners Amendment Number Four for Police Uniform and Dry Cleaning. Normally, we don't hear this level of detail on these, uh, as I think as the deputy mayor said before, uh, we had to, uh, cancel that, uh, meeting in which a lot of these would have gone through, the, uh, the meeting in which the, these would normally go through like a consent agenda. Scouts, thank you very much for being here. Thanks, thank you. And thanks for your help with the, uh, with the pledge. Chief?
Yeah, good evening again. Uh, the police department has, uh, goods and services agreement with Regency Cleaners Enterprise and Dry, uh, for uniform, uh, cleaning and dry cleaning. And, uh, we are requesting, um, council approval to extend, uh, this particular agreement. We've had three prior amendments to this agreement. We're not asking for additional funding, but we are asking to, uh, extend the term of this agreement through June 30th of 2020.
Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Sephardoson, that looks, you've got kind of a quizzitive expression. Do you have a question?
No, June 30th, 2020, 21, okay.
Of this year. Yeah, we have, uh, some uniforms that require, uh, a dry cleaning. And, uh, we have a contract with dry cleaning business. And, uh, so we're, the, the time is expiring, but we still have additional enough funding in that council-approved allocation of funds. So we're just asking it to be extended, but we're not, we're not asking for new money.
It's extended for another year and a half?
Just six months. Just for six months.
So that's 2020 then, right? Okay. I thought I heard 2021.
I know, that's what I thought I heard too.
I heard, I thought I heard 2020.
Well, that's a good thing.
About to say, I made a mistake then, but.
It's a good thing I asked, uh, because you look like you had a question. Uh, Deputy Mayor Honda, do you have a?
Yeah, I do have a question. So what happens in June of 2020? Do you come to us with a?
I think we might run out of money. That's the estimate that our staff is making. So I may be coming back to Public Safety Committee and, and then asking for committee council approval for additional funding.
Okay.
At that time.
Because that's not very far away.
It'll, it'll be here before we know it.
Thank you.
Alright. Any other questions? Alright, and, uh, Councilmember Cochmar, do you have a motion?
We want to make sure you keep those uniforms clean. So I'm proposing to move approval of the proposed amendment to the Regency Cleaners Amendment. It's number four for the police uniform and dry cleaning and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, we're gonna have some clean uniforms. Thanks, chief. At least for six months.
[laughing]
Just kidding. Um, okay, item E, After School Programs Contracted with Washington State Department of Commerce. So first, we'll have a staff report from Sarah Bridgewater, our community services manager. Sarah?
Good evening there, Farrell, Deputy there, Honda, and members of the council. Um, the policy question before you is should the city enter into an agreement with the Washington State Department of Commerce to accept grant funds totaling $142,500 for after-school programs? And as background, this is an allocation from the legislature for, uh, programs in the city of Federal Way. We will subcontract 100% of the funds that will be awarded via a competitive process. That application process concluded with the review committee, committee making recommendations in December. The review committee was comprised of Human Service Conditioners and members from the Former Violence Prevention Coalition Steering Committee. And you'll see in the staff report that the recommendations include three projects, uh, for funding. Those contracts are still being negotiated. We'll have them before council in February, so you should see those soon. This is a function of timing and making sure that we have the commerce contract executed, uh, tomorrow if possible, so this week, um, as timing permits. The projects that we are recommended for funding are the Boys and Girls Club of King County in the amount of $70,716. That's $35,358 per year. This would expand services at the EX3 Teen Center, including, um, bringing their program Youth Force to the City of Federal Way. That's a program that has been successful for, um, economic opportunities and development for youth in other communities. And they're excited to bring it here in Federal Way. Um, and they look forward to growing their membership, um, near, uh, over double, doubling. And they look forward to growing their membership, over doubling their membership by the end of the 2020-2021 school year, focusing again on teens in particular. Phenomenal She is recommended for funding in the amount of $35,892 through June of 2020. Phenomenal She actually opened an office in Federal Way. They have been providing services here for a while at community-based locations, school-based locations, and it's great to see that expansion. These funds would allow them to continue to expand the services that they offer to young women, including mentorship and other programming. And they will partner with the Game of Life to provide services to young men. And specifically, they're serving youth and young adults of color. El Centro de la Raza is recommended for funding in the amount of $35,892 from July of 2020 through June of 2021. That was the period that their request was for, as they're going to be bringing their Seattle, or their after-school program that's been in existence in Seattle, to their new Federal Way location beginning this fall, and they're looking for support in adding that service. The primary recipient of their services will be young people who are Latino and Spanish-speaking and low income in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grades. So those are the three projects that are recommended for funding. Again, you'll see those contracts next month. I just thought I would give you that context, and in support of this contract with Commerce.
Councilmember Coach Mark?
Yeah, thank you very much, Sarah. Is this a one-time-only from the Department of Commerce, or is it going to be ongoing?
It is one-time-only funding.
My goodness. Well, thank heavens.
Counsel.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Copeng.
So...
As a member of the board of the Boys and Girls Club of Federal Way, I'm going to have to recuse myself from this vote.
All right. Okay. Council, any other questions? Councilmember Sephardosson?
So Phenomenal She, they only applied for one year, then?
Phenomenal She did apply for funds through the whole grant period. El Centro de la Raza would have been... was recommended and rated at a higher level. And as a result, they did want to provide the funding to El Centro de la Raza, and there was that gap in funding, allowing us to also provide that funding to Phenomenal She. Otherwise, we would have had an additional 35. They support all three of the programs, and we're excited that they have the opportunity to recommend funding for all three. Just not quite enough to go around. If we would have had double that in funding, we could have multiplied the impact even more.
Thank you.
Okay. Council, any other questions? All right, Councilmember Coach Mark, do you have a motion?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Farrell. I move approval of the proposed amendment and authorize the mayor to execute the set agreement for the after-school program contract with the Washington State Department of Commerce.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Thank you, Sarah. Okay, now...
With one recusal.
With one recusal. Thank you very much. Thanks. Okay. Next, we've got another presentation by Ms. Bridgford for item F, Human Services General Fund Strategies. Sarah?
The policy question before you is should the city council approve the Human Services General Fund Strategies? You may recall that we have been engaging in a needs assessment. There's been lots of discussion around whether or not the strategies that were initially adopted in 1996 and have had some minor revisions over the years, whether or not they were still the appropriate services or strategies for our human service allocations. So with that in mind, we did a lot of data work. It built on the C D B G, or Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Planning Process. And we added more focus on a general level to recognize the broad goals that the city has and the various needs of residents that don't always tie to our C D B G program. And with that, we recognize that there has been a lot of focus and warranted focus on homelessness and youth programs and youth violence prevention. And that was part of the conversation, too, when evaluating the strategies and working with the Human Services Commission to make recommendations. Data would certainly indicate that we have needs across all ages and populations in the city, and that is one of the factors. That doesn't mean that there aren't increasing needs in certain areas like homelessness and youth violence prevention. But with that being said, you might not see the level of focus that some people would want to see. And part of that is there may be some unintended consequences of shifting funding to very narrow populations. Right now, the city has a relatively general human services strategy. A lot of services will fit. It recognizes the varied needs of residents in the city, and we are recommending that that continue to be the case. What we did is, with the... Again, we is with the commission, is worked on the recommendations, made some changes. We've gone from four recommendations to three. We evaluated how the recommendations were actually used, what services were kind of categorized in each of the strategies. And there was Strategy Three in particular in the original recommendation, or the original strategies, that all of the programs fit in other strategies as well. So that one went away. We've updated language on the other three strategies. There's more context in each of them. And with that, the recommendations are as follows. Strategy One is to address basic needs, including housing, health, and hunger. And then there is a description of each of those categories. You'll see them in your handout on page, or in your packet, on page 103, and how those are defined. Housing, they include services that support persons currently experiencing homelessness, as well as providing resources to prevent homelessness and promote housing stability. Health services maintain... may entail medical, physical, dental, and/or behavioral health, which includes both mental health and substance abuse. And see as addressing hunger, which could take the form of food tanks, congregant and home-delivered meals, backpack programs, and other nutritional supports. But it doesn't inherently change that Strategy One, but it does clearly define more of a focus on homelessness that wasn't called out in the original strategies. Strategy Two is promote individual and community safety through prevention, intervention, and crisis services. This includes but is not limited to services to address youth violence, violence prevention, domestic violence services, safety in the home, environment, and crisis hotlines. Again, looking for, you know, calling out more of that focus and being more strategic in addressing youth services and youth violence prevention. And then Strategy Three, promote services that foster stability and self-sufficiency for families and individuals. This strategy is more akin to Strategy Four, but we've added individuals, recognizing that not all residents are in families. And again, with that shift of combining into three strategies, this was the response. And then the context around it is hopefully shifting some additional focus to programs that are not just addressing basic needs. The majority of our applicants and their for-funded programs do tend to address immediate needs that residents are experiencing. And part of the conversation that we had had with council and other residents is really looking at opportunities to increase income, build assets, reduce debt, and look at avenues, you know, out of poverty and avenues that households can build their own stability and self-sufficiency. So that language does that. Again, the reason for not having specific goals or funding targets for homelessness or youth services is that with the amount of funding that we have, it really isn't sufficient to do that, and there could be some unintended consequences associated with programs that wouldn't be eligible for funding that currently provide essential services. There are some additional recommendations. Those are not up for adoption this evening. You should see those in the staff report as well. They come from the Human Services Commission. They do recognize a need for stronger policies and work around equity and social justice, recognizing that we do have racial disparity in both need for and access to certain social services, homelessness being one example of that, poverty in general as another. And we would take a look at having that be a stronger focus in our grant applications and would implement that for 2021 through 2022. And then the final recommendation that I would just call out is you'll see that there is intention in partnering with organizations and entities on youth services, youth violence prevention. And then we also address senior services and behavioral health as another two areas that we saw pretty big gaps with our aging population increasing and significantly over the next 10 years are anticipated to be significantly. We want to pay attention to that and look at where we can foster our services for our residents. I would be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Coach Mark?
So I'm trying to understand... So your... These are your targets. These are your general goals. So the $536,000 that was in the prior budget was... Was it the past due funds from the federal?
$536,000? That's general fund.
General fund.
Yep. So that would be the equivalent to what these strategies would be used for, for 2021 through 2022.
Okay. So are you asking for the same amount? It looks like you're asking for an increase.
And this is actually not the budget component. So what this is, is we open our application in March, and decisions, recommendations by Human Services Commission are made over the summer and into the fall. At that time, we're doing budget requests as part of the standing city budget process. That request will come later. It is the intent of the Human Services Commission to make a proposal for an increase in funding, and they will develop that funding request at a later time.
Yeah. And in the past, we've always had double, triple, quadruple the amount of requests for amount of money available. So it's kind of hard for me to understand, you know, without having a goal in mind to, you know...
I mean, we could... Whatever the amount is, we could go up too, but we need to have some kind of a base amount to...
Yes. Yep. And we, of course, would say at minimum, we would want to see the $536,000 and not see a decrease. But that is not the question this evening. We would come back.
These are your goals.
Yep. Yep. These would be the strategies that when applicants look at the application and try to see if it's an appropriate fit for funding, they'll look at them and make a determination. These would be the strategies that we see as essential in meeting needs of residents with our human service funding.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Sephardosson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sarah. I do love these strategies. And I do have a question. Well, Strategy Number Three is something I've been striving for. I've been wanting to see it, and so I'm really excited. As someone who does family self-sufficiency at my day job, and then others that have to do with financial education, I'm really excited to see it here because it's very important, especially around predatory lending and all the stuff that goes on. So having the education and supporting the... Our residents is really exciting and key for people to not continue to use the services, which otherwise has the ongoing effect. My question would be Strategy Number Two. Is that where energy assistance type of stuff will fall under?
Energy assistance would actually go into Strategy One. Housing, energy assistance is often thought of as a preventative measure for preventing homelessness as well. And if you lose access to your energy, a lot of times that then spirals into other, and we would call that insufficient housing. So it would fall into Strategy One.
Okay. So something that I've noticed that people really struggle with would... Could be stuff like car repairs, which there's no funding anywhere for. Do you think we can consider that as part of this process if there was an agency applying for it? Or do... I mean...
I would say, yes. If we had an agency applying, I would leave that... Part of that would be up to the agency to identify how they fit in the strategies. But we also do that as staff and as a condition, too. And if you're looking at services for things like car repair, that could easily be something that is supporting the self-sufficiency.
Yeah.
If these strategies have not lost the flexibility that existed in the past as well.
Okay. Because I see a lot of our families losing their jobs because they don't have transportation or their car breaks down, or childcare would be another reason that would...
Right.
Impact people from becoming self-sufficient. So just throwing that out. But thank you so much. I do appreciate this, and I look forward to seeing how it's going to fall into place when we start reviewing the applications that come through. So thank you.
Okay. Council, any other questions? Councilmember Coach Mark?
Thank you very much, Mayor Farrell. I move approval of the proposed Human Services General Fund Strategies.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Thank you, Sarah. Okay, Janitorial Services Contract. We'll have a staff report from Jason Gerwin, our Facilities Manager. Jason?
Good evening, counsel. Have a pretty simple question for you. So the city accept janitorial services bid and authorize the mayor to enter into a contract for those services. Kind of the two options on the table are to approve the proposed agreement or do not approve and provide further direction. There was a memo, and bid results were attached with your packet. Be happy to answer any questions.
Does everybody have that memo? Okay, all right. Any questions for Mr. Gerwin? All right. And Councilmember Coach Mark, do you have a motion?
Thank you very much. I approve... I move approval of the proposed agreement for the Janitorial Services Contract and authorize the mayor to execute the set agreement.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Pass unanimously. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay. Ordinances, first reading, item A, Council Bill 773. First, we'll have a staff... Well, the staff report previously presented by Ryan Coler, city attorney, and at this point, actually, I'll ask the city clerk to read the ordinance title.
Council Bill 773, Adopting and Extending Interim Land Use Regulations and Official Controls for the Provision of Telecommunication Facilities Within the City. An ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, relating to the adoption of interim land use regulations and official controls pursuant to R C W 35A 63220 and extension pursuant to R C W 3670A 390 to control the provision of telecommunication facilities within the city.
Okay. Is there any citizen comment on this? Any citizen comment? Okay. Hearing none. Counsel, are there any questions? All right, hearing none. Councilmember Copeng, do you have a motion?
I move to suspend City Council Rule 2.2H to allow first reading and enactment of the ordinance in one meeting.
Is there a second? It's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion is granted unanimously. And then Councilmember Copeng, on the main motion.
I move approval and adoption of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's unanimous. It passes. Thank you very much. All right. Second reading and enactment, item B, Council Bill 772. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 772, North Lake Management District Number Two, Establishing Assessments and Penalties. An ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, establishing the time of payment, interest, and penalties to be imposed on delinquent annual special assessments for the North Lake Management District Number Two.
Second.
All right.
There's not been a motion yet.
All right.
It's coming.
Exactly. Councilmember Coach Mark, do you have a motion?
Actually, I think...
Sorry. Councilmember Copeng?
Yes. That's going to have to be those more...
I know, I got so used to seeing Coach Mark. All right, Councilmember Copeng.
All right. I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
Now there's a second. All right, now there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Who's on first? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Thank you, Councilmember Copeng. All right, council reports. Let's start at the other end this time. Councilmember Coach Mark.
Well, thank you very much. It's a, it's a pleasure to be back on the council, and thank you for all of your warm welcome and answering my questions. I'll always have interminable questions, so thank you very much. I do want to say that both Deputy Mayor Honda and I have been meeting with Erica Norton and another volunteer group who is talking about creating a shelter in our community for youth and is now in the, private, working on a 501(c)(3) application at the moment. So we wish them well. They'll be having a meeting this week, and as that progresses, we'll have some information for you. Celebration Park, I'm going to be lobbying our new representative, Representative Johnson, and hopefully at federal lobbying for, I'd love to see the eight soccer fields at Celebration Park become turf fields so that we can increase our revenue and decrease our expenditures and use that Celebration Park 24/7. It's got lights, there's no reason why we can't do that, and we should be able to make more use out of our parks in this community. So another thing I would like our council to be very aware of and to work on, lobbying Sound Transit about the O&amp;M facility. I don't want that being just given to us without, they're just going to do it, and so we need to stand up for our community and make sure that we keep, I'll probably start going to the Sound Transit meetings, but we need to make sure that they know that it's not all right with us, that we need to stand up for our community. And so I'll be working on that along. I know Deputy Honda is, Mayor Honda is also going to be doing that. And so, so those are some of the issues I'm getting involved in. I know I'll be a pain in the side to some folks, and other folks will be happy about it. But I'm glad to be back, and I'll try to be as nice about it as possible, but thank you for, for having me back.
Very good. Well, and we've made abundantly clear to the folks of Sound Transit, and I've made abundantly clear to our representative, to the Sound Transit Board, our King County Councilman Pete Von Rekber, he knows full well our position, and I've met, actually in my office, with the, with the executive director of Sound Transit, let him know our thoughts as well. And so we're doing everything we can on that front, well, within the confines of the process. But I think you're right, you got to, you got to keep up the pressure and the, and the process.
And thank you very much for considering lobbyist, a federal lobbyist.
Absolutely. It was a great meeting last week. Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. First, you know, my congratulations to Councilmember Johnson and for becoming a state representative. So I look forward to working with you from the local arena as well. So as some of you guys have known, the last couple of days have been kind of MIA. My father, who's battling Parkinson's, and my father, who's also battling dementia, has been in the hospital for the last four, five days, and probably will be there till next, actually this coming Friday, I'm assuming. So while he's on a slow recovery path, I do wanted to take a shout out to our, our nurses. It's been absolutely phenomenal. And I know that everybody has this experience when they go to the, to the hospital or whatnot. We all experience, and we all see phenomenal nurses and whatnot, and so, but I just wanted to do a shout out to our nurses because watching how our nurses do their job is incredibly difficult work. They go through a lot, and a lot of them get bruised up, quite frankly. And so they, I'm really thankful for the nurses that have been taking care of my father, who they have been very patient with and have been very caring for. And so I just wanted to make that statement tonight, just to say thank you to the nurses at St. Francis Hospital in Federal Way. With that all in my report, thank you.
Our prayers go out to you, you and your family. Councilmember Copeng.
Yeah, I just wanted to express my appreciation as well, as Mayor expressed, for the Diversity Commission and the Black Student Union and Thomas Jefferson for a great weekend. The Diversity Commission and the Student Union worked all weekend long to make sure that the Martin Luther Remembrance was, was well-publicized and that we, we did, we did well. I think the, they did a great job, whether it was doing the, the Assembly on Friday, the food drive on Saturday, and the, the All-City Assembly on, on Monday as well. They did a fantastic job. Again, I, I think, I think often of, of Martin Luther King and just my service in that I've got a poster in my back in my office that says, "Injustice Anywhere is a Threat to Justice Everywhere." And I think that is so true, and it is something that as, as a council, as a member of the council, I always want to make sure that I am understanding the, the needs of the community, and you get that perspective every time. I do appreciate the challenge that Gary gave us, I think, today to, tonight, to really dive into understanding the history of the Black community and certainly look forward to any recommendations. I certainly will do my own research, but I, I can speak as one council member, I would certainly welcome any emails from any member of the community that has some suggestions on events to attend or things to read. I think it's always good for us to, it's always been good for me to continue my education and to understand things and welcome that opportunity. So again, I think this is a great memorial that we do as a nation and as a city in Federal Way. I think that it's, it's a service to, to the entire community when we honor someone like Martin Luther King. So thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Councilor Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry. I just want to thank Deputy Mayor and my fellow council members for allowing me to continue to serve on the two committees, the FedRAC Committee and the Land Use and Transportation Committee. So I'll try my best to fulfill my duties. Next Saturday is the Lunar New Year, so I just want to take this opportunity to wish everybody a Happy New Year. I just want to share with you a little note that yesterday in Las Vegas, I was, during the interview, I was trying to correct the TV reporter not to use the Chinese New Year, instead use the Lunar New Year to be more inclusive. Well, that did not go very well. But, nope, that's it.
All right.
Where can we watch that at?
I think it's Channel 5.
Is, what is, is this the year of the rat? What is this? The golden rat?
It's supposed to be lucky. They have the 12 animals, and each year they...
I'm, I'm a monkey.
I'm, I'm the ox.
Boy, that's such a nice setup. I'm not, I'm not going to go there.
I want to hear you, Mayor.
Exactly. All right. Councilmember Representative Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm actually not sure if this is going to be my last city council meeting. We're, we're still going to work on, as I mentioned earlier, the mayor, deputy mayor, and I are going to work on what that transition looks like, but if it is, I just want to, again, thank the community for entrusting your vote two and a half years ago for myself for this role, and I hope that I have indeed served this role with purpose and intention through my values of equity, inclusion, and social justice, and I hope I've done the best that I could. And if not, then I look forward to being back, but I think, we'll determine that shortly. But I think it's been, it's been an awesome ride, and I just look forward to serving the community in my next role. And I do want to shout out a number of folks that are still in the crowd, actually, for supporting throughout the way and giving advice, giving encouragement, support, input. So Tim Burns, Leah Allison, even Denise in the back, I think Denise, and Dana Holloway. I remember doorbelling your home when I was running for city council, and so just a number of folks I could thank, but I just want to thank you all, and I will definitely give 110% to this new opportunity as your state representative. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Sephardaan.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone. So under SCA, I've been appointed to other, to other committees that I plan on serving well. One is the Economic Development District Board, or EDDB, and the fact that I'm going to be on the LTAC, I think those two committees would probably, will, will find some opportunities to really bring Federal Way, put it on the map within our region. So I'm really looking forward to seeing how those two could work together. And then the other committee I'm serving on is the Regional Law and Safety Justice Committee, which meets at 7:30 a.m. in Seattle. But it's something that I've signed on, and I look forward to also serving on that. And then also, I continue, I'll continue to serve on the High Line Forum here, representing Federal Way. And thank you so much for your service, council member and state rep, Johnson. It's been really a great pleasure and honor to serve and sit here next to you and work with you closely, and I really look forward to working with you, continue working with you as our rep. And just to even say that I worked with you and know you as you progress and move forward within your political journey will be very exciting. And council member Moore, I'm really sorry about your dad, and I pray for speedy recovery for him. And again, welcome, council member Coach Mark here on the dais, and looking forward to the next person who's going to be sitting here. So with that, I end my report.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Honda.
Thank you. So I have a lot of thank-yous. Just a week ago, we were experiencing horribly cold weather, and I'd like to thank our staff who kept our roads safe. They were out early morning, late at night, keeping the roads clear for us. I'd also like to thank Sarah Bridgeford for the emergency shelter that was in place for, I think, two nights. And we served over, what, 20 people each night, something like that?
Right.
So it was definitely needed, and I appreciate the fact that we had it open. I myself would have it open every night, but that's just me. I'd also like to thank the Youth Commission for coming here tonight and for the work that they're doing. I think when we got that commission going again, we had ideas of what they could do, but we didn't know what they were going to accomplish, and they've accomplished far more than I thought that they would be doing, so I'm very proud of them. Thank you to Thomas Jefferson High School, BSU, the Diversity Commission for the annual MLK event, and to the volunteers who came on Friday, I mean, Saturday, for the food drive. One of those volunteers is Chris Brown. He was the past chair of the Diversity Commission and served with me on the Diversity Commission. He's no longer on that commission, but he continues to work at the food drive by picking up the containers of food and delivering them to where they're going. So thank you, Chris, for your continued involvement. I'd like to thank the Korean Americans who invited us to the Washington State Korean American Day on Saturday, which they've done for the past, it's a 13th annual event, and I think I've missed maybe four of those over the years. It's always a great event. And the point and time count is this Friday at 2:00 in the morning, and we meet at MSC, and we go out for a couple of hours to try to get the most accurate count we can for Federal Way of how many homeless folks we have. So they're still looking for volunteers. If you'd like to join us, please call MSC, and, and they'll give you the directions and tell you if you're still needed, but you will get breakfast at the end of it, and it's certainly worth your time in, in helping us come up with a count of our homeless folks. And I'd also like to thank council member Johnson for his work here on council. I have really enjoyed working with you. I will certainly miss you. And to those listening, he's still here. I hope he's still here for another month or so. I, you know, I don't want you to leave right away. And when the time comes, we will have the process for appointing a new council member. We will make it very public, let as many people as everyone in the city know, and at this point, he is still a council member, still working very hard on the council. So thank you very much. Good luck in Olympia, and we'll be watching you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And thank you, council, for a great meeting. Thank you, everybody, for your participation. We are adjourned.